Yeah, driving. All right, this is the February thirteenth special meeting of the Mansfield University Towngown Relations Committee, and I'm calling this meeting to order. The first item on the biz, on the agenda is the opportunity for the public to address the committee. Is there anybody here from the public who wishes to address the committee? Or do we have any communications? Margaret says no. Thank you. Next item is approval of the December twelfth twenty-three minutes. Is there a motion to approve? When somebody.
So moved.
Was that Sean?
That was Nathan.
Nathan moved and John second. Okay. I've almost forgotten how to do this, conduct a meeting online and did it for a couple of years and it's been a while. All right. First, I'd like to introduce and welcome Nathan First, who is now the university's representative on this committee. Welcome. Is there anything you would like to say to the committee?
You know, I'm just really super excited as a resident of the town to be serving this capacity. I love Yukon. I bleed blue. And I love the town of Mansfield. It's where my family has settled and love raising our family here. So to be able to serve in a capacity that services both interests is really super exciting for me and I consider it an honor. So, thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you and give credit to Kara Workman. I know she's not here. I don't think she is. But to give her thanks and appreciation for all that she's done, working with you all and, and working with all of us here at the university. She's done a superb job and she has been so thoughtful and deliberate as a part of this transition. I just want you all to know that she has been chatting with a lot of us, including myself in particular, as we think about maintaining our communication and support and collaboration with the town of Mansfield. So, big shout out to Kara.
Thank you. I don't know if you know everybody from the town side at this meeting, so I'm going to ask everybody on the town side to introduce themselves. Paul, you want to go first?
Yeah, I'm Paul Acho. I'm Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And in my previous life, I was an expert on chickens.
Ryan?
Nathan, good to see you again, Nathan. I've had a number of conversations, but Ryan Aylesworth, Town Manager.
Jen?
Hi, Nathan. We've met many times before. Jennifer Kaufman, Director of Planning and Development.
Cynthia, you've, I'm sure you also have met many times before. Susanna?
Hey, sorry, I was scarfing the end of my lunch. I know Nathan pretty well. Our kids are in school together, so it's good to see you in this context.
And is there anybody else? Brian, I'm sorry.
Hey, Nathan. My name is Brian Coleman. I'm also on the Town Council. I can, I'm a developer commission and downtown partnership. I am, me and my wife are both graduates of the University of Connecticut and our two children, two children are both graduates of, of the University of Connecticut, so we have a pretty strong kind of connection.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the staff to staff meetings. Ryan and Nathan, do, how do you want to report on this?
Sure, I can start and Nathan can hop in with his own thoughts if I miss anything. But obviously, the, the staffing change in terms of Yukon's assignment, the liaison to the town, that is relatively, relatively new development. And so, and then this, earlier this month, sort of our regularly scheduled staff to staff meeting happened to coincide with me being in Florida. So we haven't had kind of our version of yet of our small group staff to staff meetings that involves Jen and Cynthia on my side and a few folks from Yukon. So Nathan and I have had a small handful of one-on-one conversations. I think we're opening up lines of communication around a number of important topics. And certainly for my part, excited that he's in this role, you know, given the position that he occupies with Yukon. I think it touches on a lot of highly relevant topics of interest and high, high importance to the town of Mansfield. So we're looking forward to kind of building that, rebuilding that apparatus, if you will, that small group. One of the key subjects or topics I know we want to, we actually would have been talking about earlier this month, so we're going to try to get it lined back up here soon, is to bring in Pamir, you know, from the tech park and have a conversation, robust conversation about what's going on with the tech park, how that kind of is in line with town, town goals and objectives for economic development off campus and how we might be able to work together and some shared goals around that. Obviously, you know, it has the potential to be a major economic driver as well as, you know, housing development driver. If the tech park really takes off for the quote-unquote, you know, non-student, you know, population, potential, potential workforce development. So, so really excited about that. And I also, I guess, just maybe in closing, would, for my own part, echo exactly what Nathan said about Kara. You know, I've been here a little over three years and, and, you know, Kara being the primary liaison to the town from Yukon was kind of all, all I ever knew. She was in that role when I started. Her, her role with Yukon has changed a little bit with changes in administration. But one thing that has been constant despite her, you know, slight shifts in job titles and that sort of stuff. You know, one thing that hasn't changed is certainly her, her commitment and her level of engagement and the value that she, you know, has always brought to those discussions. So, so for my part, I just want to thank Kara because I think she does a tremendous job and she's done a tremendous job in that role. And we look forward to this next chapter, working with Nathan.
You know, it might not be a bad idea if this committee sent her a letter of thanks. Margaret, could you do a rough draft for Nathan and me to sign? And we'll take a look at that because clearly she's going to be missed. Although I suspect she'll be active in other places and other ways and we'll see her. But this committee will miss her for sure. Nathan, do you want to add to that?
No, I think Ryan covered it pretty well, so.
Okay. Next item is town of Mansfield development updates. Jen and Ryan?
Do you want me to start, Ryan?
Yeah, sorry, my mute button was getting stuck. So yes, please, please run with it.
Great. So we, the town, the Planning and Zoning Commission extended the temporary unlimited moratorium on high-density housing until August thirty-first. So we are fast and furiously working on updating our zoning regulations so that we can lift the moratorium, but also make sure that the development that we get is reflective of what the community wants. The two last applications that were not subject to the moratorium, five forty-one and five fifty-five Middle Turnpike, they're two separate parcels, but they came in under one development. They were denied. One, one application failed, the motion failed because it was a tie vote by the Planning and Zoning Committee or the Inland Wetlands Agency, and the other one was, was denied. So the appeal period for those applications has expired. So they will now, if they were to come, they're subject to the moratorium. So I don't expect that we'll be hearing from them until this coming fall. In terms of other, other things that are happening, I'm sure you're all aware and have been keeping an eye on the standard at Four Corners. That continues, the construction there continues to move fast and furiously. Also Eagleville Green on two, on Route two seventy-five, that is also moving quickly. We have not received zoning permit applications for the other three approved developments, but we expect to hear from them soon. We have heard from, you know, they've asked the town for things like our letter of approval so that they can go to the Office of Traffic, say, to OSTA. So anyways, so that's about all I have. Oh, one other thing is that we are coming, the Northwest Mansfield Vision and Strategy Plan. We will be developing, we are developing the goals, the vision goals and strategies, and we'll be presenting that to the public fairly soon.
Jen, what was the reasoning behind the denial of the two, of the development?
I think the, the development within the Upland Review Area, they just felt it was too intense, too close to wetlands. So, and they felt that they're, it's been a couple of months now, but basically their alternatives analysis wasn't strong enough that maybe they could have done something differently on that site that would have less significant impact to the wetlands and watercourses.
Did the problems with the standard and the water and the invasion into the wetlands have anything to do with it, do you think?
No, I mean, they, they have to, the Wetlands Agency has to look at every application separately and distinctly. And the violation of the standard had, can have no bearing on that decision.
Any questions for Jen or Ryan on this? All right, the next item, Jen.
Looks like Sean, looks like Sean has his hand up.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Ryan. Hi, everyone. Jen, just for geographical reference, those two denials are there approximately on either side of the proposed development at the old golf course?
They're on the east side of the former golf course, the former Toll Christmas Tree Farm or Tree Farm. And then also a property that is owned by Pat Farino that is immediately west of the professional park. So those, that's five fifty-five and five fifty-five, five forty-one Middle Turnpike.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
So those aren't the, the, that's not the parcel that, that's around Toast and Hops, right?
Correct. That one has been, that one, that development was approved back in, yep.
And the development that the old golf course has been approved?
That is correct. Yep. So the next phase is zoning, they, they, their special permits have been approved. The next phase is their zoning permit and then they get a building permit.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, then we move on to Yukon construction updates. Sean? I gotta say, I, I finally found my way around the old fieldhouse to get to Jorgensen last night, so that was good news.
Well, not for much longer because it is a safety concern of ours that cut through and the, our parking services colleagues plan to install bollards back there, so you'll have to turn around.
Shucks.
Yeah, it, it, there, there's a, yeah, it's, it's dangerous. I'm sure you obeyed the speed limit and then some, but others do not. So I have a few updates. The South Campus Residence Hall, we're still targeting opening fall of this year. There is a tremendous amount of work to do, so we imagine it's going to be pretty fast-paced once we come out of the winter season. The infrastructure project on the south side of campus will also be wrapping up the majority of its work this calendar year, but there will be pockets of work that will extend through summer of 2025 with, with continued impacts to Lot S on the Eosmith side of campus. The School of Nursing project that I've, that I've reported on previously, its scoping notice period is set to expire at the end of this month. So we intend to file a need more time notice to issue the post-scoping notice that will be, be published. I believe the publication date is March, Tuesday, March fifth. So we'll, we think that we'll have a post-scoping notice, we'll identify an approximate date for the post-scoping notice in the need more time notice on March fifth, but we think that we'll have the post-scoping notice prepared within the next publication period, date or two after, so sometime around mid-March, early April. So we do need more time. By statute, we have to publish need more time notice at the six-month period, but it should only be a couple of more weeks beyond that six months. And then our intersection project that you probably saw mobilize for a couple of months at Discovery Drive and Hillside Road, North Eagleville Road. Unfortunately, when the mast arms arrived on campus, they had a manufacturing error. And so we had to order new mast arms and it's going to be an eight-week lead time. So if we cannot, there's about two weeks of work left to get the new signals operating. If they, if they do not hit the eight-week mark, which will bring us close to final exam, spring break, not spring break, but mid-April and then final exams, we may have to just wait until after commencement to wrap that project up. Happy to take any questions?
Questions? Ryan?
Sean, is there any update or latest thinking you're able to share about the, the Mansfield Apartments site? And kind of just the prognosis or projections, plans moving forward with that?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further questions about Yukon's development? All right, I skipped Cynthia. Cynthia, do you want to do a downtown partnership economic development report?
That'd be great. Thank you. Excuse me. So a couple of follow-ups from the last meeting. We had several businesses open in the downtown, I think, a couple of days after the last meeting. Plyables opened and Mayor Moran did the ribbon cutting there in the cold day. Nautical Bowls, Action Pact, also open on Wilbur Crossway. And then the latest estimate from Husky's second location in the downtown, or second location in Mansfield is mid-March. So I know they're trying to open around March Madness. Connecticut's Countryside, so that's our economic development initiative with Bolton, Coventry and Talland. We interviewed, or we interviewed and are interviewing this week for folks to develop the website and social media. So we hope to have a recommendation for our steering committee at its meeting next week. Cultural District, as we're noted in the, in the minutes, we were headed toward our, our last meeting, our third community engagement meeting to develop a cultural district. And a few of us, Ryan, our EDC Chair, Steve Farino and I, and our cultural coalition partners are talking, I think, in two weeks about next steps and what that involves in terms of whether we want to move forward, whether there's a council. You know, the council would need to approve moving forward. And then at some point through the process, we would potentially seek state, state designation, excuse me. And then we just finished up our third Taste of Towns with Wyndham. And I'm really happy with the way that went. We had, just real quickly, we had twelve food establishments participate. Plyables, Nautical Bowls, Haven Hot Chicken, Coyote Flaco, Square Peg, Hops Forty-four, Little Aladdin, Dogland Cafe, Gans at Wraps, Taco, Fed River Grill and Cat Mandu Kitchen. So this is up from eight last year up to twelve, up from eight to twelve. And we also had several new restaurants participate. We also got some great media coverage with a lot of help from Margaret, Kathleen in our office, Andy Goop from Will Mantick Renaissance. So we had coverage in WFSB, WTNH, The Current, The Chronicle, CT Insider and appearances on WIOLI. And then the last couple of things to mention are, I've been working, Sean chairs our, our working group on promotion in public spaces. And potentially this week, maybe next week, we will have some umbrellas for the town square and new tables and chairs. The umbrellas will really help, we think, with some of the shade issues that we have. And our, our old tables and chairs were very, very, worked really well, but they were definitely getting tired and, and a few of them broken. So we're excited to bring those out for the spring. And then we're working on our event calendar for the year that hopefully in March or so, maybe February, be able to announce that. So that's all I had. If there's any questions, there's four board members here too on the partnership board if they have any questions or comments.
I just have a, a quick comment. It's like, I made an attempt to visit restaurants and write reviews, but in the middle of it, I, I came down with a case of diverticulitis and it, it, it unfortunately brought an end to what I was doing. Of course, it has no bearing on the food that I was eating. It's a condition that unfortunately some of us at my age get.
Well, then I'll report also that Mayor DeVivo and I ate at Plyables and he took me to the fairway at the country club. I was hoping to take him to Fenton River, but the week ran out before I realized it was over. So I may have to take him there anyway. But that is one of the nicer, nicest parts of this event. And that is that it gives us an opportunity to have a very positive relationship with our neighboring town where, as you, as you may know, that has not always been the case.
You should have invited everybody down to the Stone Road for that get-together with all the, you know, people I felt left out of that. I think that was on the twenty-ninth?
It was, it was open to participants and to the leaders of the, of the Taste of Two Towns organization. So it was mostly restaurant owners. But it was very interesting because the man who owns the Main Street Cafe in Manchester is the head of the Restaurants Association in Connecticut and he lives in Mansfield. So we may have some, a real interesting contact there in terms of economic development and publicity both. So, and he was very pleased by the event. So it was nice to meet him, nice to talk to him and nice to know that Mansfield attracts people because of it.
I guess the suggestion that you extend the invitation to people that are actually involved as well, if that, if that's possible there.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. I will take it into consideration. It's not my invitation to extend. It's extended by the organizers of the Taste of Two Towns. Who focus on the restaurant owners and occasionally bring in mayors just for show. All right, the next item, Cynthia, is there anything else you want to add?
No, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okeydoke. Yukon Campus Updates, Nathan and John?
Yeah, there's a few things that we wanted to share with you. One of them being that we are continuing our, our path of replacing John, I suppose, you could say. So in terms of the off-campus student services position, that position description is sitting in our Human Resources Office right now for final approval and should be posted and opening the search relatively soon. As we know, John isn't going anywhere, just like Kara is not going anywhere and he's here with us today. But we'll continue to be involved and doing the great work that he's doing as he's leading the Care and Concern Team, but is still obviously engaged with his here today as we continue to transition that role. I am going to turn it over to John to see if he has anything to add. And then John, if you just want to talk about the memo that we discussed earlier, I'm going to lead right into that.
So thank you, Nathan. One of the things that Nathan and I talked about was, earlier today, was an initiative that dates back to about 2017. And that's, was an initiative where we, I would put together a lot of information pertinent to the university and what was happening. So there were no surprises for the fall and the spring. I'm going to share my screen now, if that's okay, and share with you the memo that we typically would share. This is the last one that we shared. Mayor, I can see you. Can you see the memo?
Yes.
Okay. This was the last memo we shared, which was spring in 2023. With changes in my role, this was initiative that I had led for a number of years. Wanted to get the opinion, Ryan, from yourself, Mayor, from yourself, to in, to have some indications of if this was helpful. The memo has changed over time and it, it's now in, currently in flux because we have not sent one out this year, but will be willing to send one out for the spring. There's a number of dates that are pertinent and important dates that everyone should be aware of, both in the fall and the spring. And wanted to get some feedback if this is something that you would be interested in receiving once again. So typically we would send this out relatively early in the spring. I think this date, this was dated early in March. However, to give everyone a full picture of what's happening in each semester, we could easily do this earlier in the semester. I've already started on us one for spring twenty-four. There's so many dates that are important. Women's and men's basketball tournaments are, both men's and women's basketball are doing very well. So putting those dates out for everyone to be aware of, our spring concert will happen once again, Yukon Bound Days, Spring Weekend. This memo will almost be a cookie cutter of what we would create for spring 2024 because many of the dates and many of the things that we're seeing on this memo will occur again in spring. So I just wanted to stop there briefly and get some thoughts on if this was helpful, if we could, should continue doing this memo.
So for my part, John, appreciate you asking the question. For somebody, you know, certainly in my role, who's not necessarily as plugged into things on a day-to-day basis the way that like, say Sergeant Merrill would be where, you know, even if this wasn't sort of laid out in a memorandum, probably just the regular kind of normal conversation touchpoints, this information would come up. So for somebody like me who's certainly more arms-length from that, having this kind of grab-and-go document where it's all kind of laid out there, it doesn't replace the fact that conversations, you know, need to happen as different events come up and the planning around those and, you know, conversations I would be having with Resident Trooper's Office around that. But I, I certainly would welcome and encourage, you know, the continuation of the, you know, the publication of these memos.
Thank you, Ryan. And I think it's, might be helpful for, I started to put together some dates for the spring semester. Can folks see my, this memo, the, see my screen for the memo? I started to put together some dates that are important for spring 2024. This is the memo that we would actually send out. I thought it's important to also add our on-campus housing selection. And we may even add some things that have not been on the memo in the past that are important, maybe some construction updates if Sean is amenable to that. So that's something that we could consider. But just to give you some ideas of what we were looking at for the spring and where we're at, many of the dates coincide with what we've had in the past spring. Housing selection really is underway for on-campus housing. It, applications were due February ninth. If, the whole process concludes April twenty-sixth. So just so you know, for students that are currently living on campus, all applications are currently in and that process will extend all the way through April twenty-sixth. Spring break, that's coming up pretty quickly, March tenth through the sixteenth. That's going to happen, middle of March, it's typically around the same time. I started to put dates in here for Elite Eight, Final Four for men's and women's. The spring concert will be April eleventh, Yukon Bound Days, April sixth, April thirteenth, commencement's May fourth through the sixth. I'll reverse some of these dates and then Spring Weekend will be happening again this year and it will be Thursday, April eighteenth through Saturday, April twentieth. So these are just some dates that we will include in the memo.
And John, when you, your list for Spring Weekend, will you also list the events that you're doing on campus?
Absolutely. What I did last year, Mayor, was in the spring was I put a link right to the website, if that was helpful. And it's a, there's a lot of events that occur through that weekend, so many that it might clog up this memo a little bit. So putting a link directly into the site for Spring Weekend, we thought was a little bit better. So that will be something that we can include, links in all of these pages. Yukon Bound Days, the concert, which is the Yukonic Music Festival, Spring Weekend, anything that would be helpful.
Has anybody seen anything happening off-campus as a result of Spring Weekend?
Once again, Mayor, sorry, didn't hear that.
The, the issues that we had with Spring Weekend in the past were off-campus activities. Have, have, has that managed, those activities been confined to campus in recent years? I know that for the last several years, they have been, and, and I'm hoping that we don't see the development of an off-campus celebration again.
Agreed. I absolutely agree. All of the events that we will gear and put in this memo for the, for the Yukon Spring Weekend site will be all university sanctioned events. Even though the university does not have control over off-campus, non-sanctioned events, for the past five years, that includes the pandemic, we saw minimal activity. The, the bigger concerns that I saw when I was in my role for off-campus was really intermittent warm weather days. And that, those are days when the weather gets warm, students want to be outside and we start to see activities. So that will be included in the memo. They are sporadic. We have no, no prior knowledge of when they're going to be occurring. But I think it's important, the work that I was doing with Sergeant Merrill, they're aware of those day parties. They're aware of parties that can occur and even evening events. So patrols are helpful to keep those under, to keep those under control.
And have you had contact with the owners of Carriage House and Cellar on, around these issues in recent years? I know you didn't have.
Yeah, all of the, all the properties will, I have a meeting with all the properties prior to Spring Weekend. However, we have not seen large group activity or parties at apartment complexes since, on 2015. They're, they're real issues that we The the real issues that we see are in single-family rentals, but the issues that are in apartment complexes have diminished, almost gone away.
I would note that John and and I are meeting with Sergeant Merrill. Kristin Zadnik reached out the other day and so we can raise this as an item for discussion with them as we coordinate activity between the Resident State Trooper Office and the university in that upcoming conversation as well.
Good. I mean, that's the collaboration that really works. And it is really helpful in in the community, anyway.
Mayor, I have two more things, if I can, that I would just add that kind of tack on to what John had talked about there. One of them is about housing and Sean mentioned we're opening a new residence hall. And John talked about the deadlines for students signing up. Those numbers are significant and we expect to have over thirteen thousand students living on campus next fall. It'll actually be one of the largest occupancies we've ever had of on-campus students at the university in our history. And so you know, as those matters continue to emerge, that's something that we could keep in our list of discussion topics as it relates to our interaction with you all. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that we are paying even closer to attention to the NCAA tournament than what we had even last year. As you know, there was a lot of post-game activity on campus, which the students obviously were very excited, but resulted in some amount of damage. And so we're really working to try and be very proactive as much as we can be to try and think about not just safety, but what are other activities around the tournament that we may want to consider as it relates to the Final Four. And so I just wanted to share that with with this group that in addition to the public safety element of it all, there's another conversation going on around activities and the like.
Okay, Brian?
Yeah, Nathan or or John? So we have thirteen thousand living on campus now. Do you have any projections for upcoming enrollment for the next few years and the housing needs of the of the university?
We do. They're fluid and largely interact with these new off-campus developments too, out of full transparency, right? Because some of them are designed to satisfy the needs of off-campus students. And so that's something that is, well, the right word really is fluid. I mean, we're really trying to work to understand how that changes the landscape going forward. While we expect to be at a high watermark next fall in terms of on-campus residency, we do anticipate that that will come down just a little bit as the standard, as an example, opens up and begins to perhaps have some upper-division students looking to live there. It's worth noting that first-year students continue to be required to live on campus for their full first year. And so that's something that forces in play here also. So overall, total enrollment for undergraduate students is expected to continue to grow in modest ways over the next four to five years. And so but that's along a pattern and trajectory that we've been on, nothing over and above that necessarily that we're seeing as of today.
Could you define modest?
Four hundred? You know, an increase of around four hundred per year, something along those lines. So.
Okay, four hundred, if they lived off-campus, could have a real impact on the town, but but you are increasing on-campus and they're also increasing apartment complexes. So with with any luck at all, it should reduce the impact on single-family residences. I hope.
Yeah, if you consider that we have over thirteen thousand and you consider that there's over two thousand or more beds that are opening off-campus, you know, that's a significant amount of space designed to satisfy student demand. So we're not anticipating that any of our growth will outstrip the available occupancy on-campus and then these off-campus developments that would otherwise cause a surge into the community in the way that you're suggesting there.
Okay, other questions? For Nathan? Or John? All right, seeing none. Are there any other updates or progress to report on anything? What one thing I think that's that is interesting for this group is that the Downtown Partnership has as its among its goals, increasing university student participation in events at on the square, for example. And so one of my favorite recollections was the time that the the two princesses from Frozen came to a movie night and the women's soccer team was training in the in the Oaks, was staying in the Oaks as part of their summer training. And we had these wonderful photographs of all of those young women singing with the singing Frozen songs with the two princesses. At and at that point, I realized we really should be trying to do more to entertain the the folks who live in that area. So I'm it's part of our goals and I'm really hoping that we do some something that makes the downtown even more attractive to students. Anything else from anybody?
I did want to actually mention, because it occurs to me, I probably should have mentioned this before. I think it was maybe the most recent meeting where where Dale, who's not here today, when we had reported on UConn's decision to to reinstate that off-campus and commuter student services function, albeit, you know, it's sort of an evolving place within the org chart. Dale had asked, you know, or was encouraged by the news and asked that we make sure to share it in in other venues. And so I just want to make sure, I think we had talked about including that in the town's next bimonthly newsletter. And so I just want to point out that we did do that in the February-March issue that was published, what, ten days ago or so?
Okay, thank you. For future agenda items, there will be, we will have to take a look at the memo between the university and the town that is the foundation for this committee. And I think we will ask probably the same group of people who are doing this, the staff-to-staff meetings to take in an initial look at that memo. And because it will have to come to this committee for review and then have to go to the university and to the council for approval. I don't remember what the date is, but it is about a year out before it expires.
Happy to take that on, Mayor.
Okay, that that makes sense as a committee because you're already talking to one another and it should be on your on your list of things to do, I should think. John?
Mayor, for future agenda items, I think something that would be helpful, and it was mentioned this meeting, a number of different residential construction projects that are happening off-campus, to coincide with that is, is there a transportation plan and a safety plan? I know we've talked about this before to go along with some of those projects, getting individuals to and from their destination safely. Will there be bus services? Will there be sidewalks added? So those are just pieces that, as we continue to grow in the off-campus market, looking at safety of individuals getting to and from their destinations.
That's very interesting. Now, you have given over, the university given over its bus service to WRTD?
That is, that is correct.
Yeah, WRTD operates it for us. And so it's, no. I wouldn't say it's given over necessarily, but they are more of a contractor working on behalf, operating our our bus service.
So you determine the schedules and the routes, but they just operate the buses?
Correct.
I think it would make a lot of sense to talk about this at the next, at an upcoming meeting because we really need to talk about extending the campus bus services into these off-campus developments. I've been assuming that since RT, WRTD did it, that that would be automatic. We also heard from some of the developers at one point or another that they might be planning shuttle services. So I think this will take a little bit of research on on the committee's part, both on both sides, but let's add it not to March, because that's coming up too quickly, but to April's agenda. Can we do that?
I mean, that just is a real quick. The 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 standard, the villages and the four ninety-seven middle turnpike, they all will be served by WRTD. Not so as I'm not sure how that, it's not really the campus, it's WRTD. And then, as will the hub, the hub is also having a private shuttle service. But kind of summarizing all of that, I and I'm happy to share their property management plans that were approved as part of the special permit application. So I'm happy to pull that together for the town.
And, you know, pieces that Jennifer too, as I'm looking at the standards of four corners when I drive in, what I know about commuter students, the students that live in off-campus properties, they will they will make a decision. They will make a decision to either get on a bus or start walking. And so the the questions I have, and just looking at that one property, is if they start walking, will will there be a safe route to get them to Discovery Drive, which will be which would be the preferred way for students to come onto campus because there are walkways that are safe, they're lit. And so will there be a destination point from the standards to where we get to campus that students could walk to safely? Because as it is right now, they would need to walk along one ninety-five and I don't feel that's a very safe route.
Neither do we.
Yeah. So yes, and they are, once the standard is built, there will be a sidewalk all along one ninety-five and then yeah, so but all that is all part of those developments and they have to be built. So this, once the villages are built, there will be that a path.
Jen, that that sidewalk ends at forty-four. It doesn't go down one ninety-five to the towers, for example.
That's correct, but they can, to John's point, they can walk along forty-four to Discovery Drive.
Right, okay.
Will there be a sidewalk, a sidewalk on forty-four?
Just on the other side.
Okay.
Yeah, and anytime they're going to be a that's part of the what we require is that they have to put a sidewalk in front of their property. So there will be a sidewalk at that will end just shy of the the boundary with four corner, with toast at four corners, that property.
Thanks, Jennifer.
I saw Brian first and then Sean.
Thank you, Tony. The question I have is, I don't know if everybody has the answer to this question, is I I have noticed that the university buses have ended up at the WTRD facility there on the service road down there. They're stored in Mansfield. Are they registered in Mansfield or is the university giving up registration on those vehicles? And does anybody have an idea where those, what town those buses are registered in? Just for a question for the grand list.
Yeah, I don't know that we have the answer to that question today, but something that we could add to the list of of topics when we talk about transportation. And Sean, you do you know?
I don't, I'm not a hundred percent certain, but they might have state plates. They might be state-registered vehicles that we'd have to check.
Suzanne, Suzanne has her.
I know, but there was somebody else whose hand was up besides Susannah. So Susannah, you go and the next person let put their hand up again.
Hey, thanks. I know, I hope I'm not squeaky wheel. I'm very new to this committee still and and so I appreciate your patience with me seeming to heart, but I feel that there is a gap between what is legally required and sufficient in terms of safety and what what really is required in terms of the way eighteen to twenty-five-year-olds actually move through space, let's say seventeen to twenty-five-year-olds. And so I'm very concerned that our notion of safety is how we hope to herd cats towards, right, you know, the notion that that we will have in our heads, that they will walk from four corners over to Discovery, right, and not try to make, take the fastest, most efficient straight line. I think that's sort of fanciful, frankly. I mean, I it's just in the way that I look on the other side of campus, which I'm closer to, South Eagleville, and notice just how much foot traffic is on the side of the street without a sidewalk now. It's dramatically increased from what it used to be. Students trying to make their way along the side where there isn't a sidewalk. And and I think as a town and university, we have to do better than that. We have to do better than we're going to have like sidewalk gap, sidewalk gap. Oh, but if they cross the street here, we'll get them over here and then they'll be on Discovery. I I think it is imperative that the sidewalk loop is closed from four corners to campus. And I don't, I don't think we should settle for it'll be okay for five years until we can do that and whatever that requires. And I know Ryan applause to you. I know I've heard you loud and clear that you've tried this, that you've not had success so far. I'm happy, I'm not, I'm not hugely experienced in grad writing, but I'm happy to to volunteer my time and energy, if that would be helpful. I am a good writer. I I I just think we have to set the bar higher than what is strictly required by law in order to make a safe community that not just UConn students, but our own teenagers and K through twelve population can be safe moving around. Because once you build out the infrastructure, it's the whole community that's going to be out on these roads, walking and connecting, not just sort of UConn students, right? We talked about how we want families living in these developments, all the more likely than that we get children, right, not college-age and young adults who are not college students, moving through space in a way that's not safe for them to do so. And I don't know what it's going to require, but but I do think we should set the bar higher for ourselves as a community, a university-town community, and whatever it takes, pull this off and make it a priority. So that's just my piece. And it's not against anyone here. I know we're on the same page, but I just, I urge us to make this an urgent goal and and whatever it takes to pull it off.
Whenever I have an opportunity to talk to somebody who might have something to say about this, I tell them this is a catastrophe waiting to happen. It's just astonishing that somebody hasn't been hurt there yet. But absolutely. John, followed by Jen.
Suzanne, I just want to thank you. That's one hundred percent correct that we need to start looking at this as a really identified issue. And I know I want to thank the mayor and Ryan both because they are strong advocates for pedestrian safety and and putting in sidewalks. They've made many attempts to get something in between campus and four corners. Unfortunately, the funding has not been there. What I will say is that the the increase in rentals that we have seen, single families in specific, specifically from South Eagleville, south towards Willamette is growing. It's also growing up in Storrs Heights. We're also seeing a number of international students that get approved to come to campus because of visa issues later in the summer, which puts them farther out. Many of them don't come with vehicles, so they're making every attempt they can to walk to campus. So I completely agree, the more and more we look at this issue, that we need to make it a safety issue. And not to mention, I know Sean has been an advocate of this as well. Some of the larger events we've seen on on one ninety-five on those warm fall nights have brought pedestrian traffic walking in the road. So safety going forward needs to be something we look at and I appreciate everyone's consideration.
Jen, followed by Sean.
Susanna, I think we are, all are on the same page. So and I do think a united front with the university and the town is is, I think we're moving in that direction and I think we need to continue to move in that direction. You know, in terms of there, so there's a couple of things that happened. There's the regulatory side, which was what we can require of a developer, and that is that we require them to put a sidewalk along their frontage. And then there's also the grant side. So we do have a large project that is underway along two seventy-five to widen the multi-use path there to do traffic calming. But we're going to need to look at that, you know, in in many areas of town and that will be either through state funding or in some instances, town funding, because we can't really require a developer to go beyond their their actual frontage. So I think that I'm I'm happy that we're kind of looking at this sort of pedestrian movement and looking at public transportation. And I do think that we're going to have to make sure that we're that that we're identifying the path of least resistance, the quickest and most efficient ways for these students to get to campus or for anyone to walk safely on our roads. The other one final thing before I forget is that we do have a pedestrian, a bike and pedestrian master plan. The other one final thing before I forget is that we do have a pedestrian, a bike and pedestrian master plan that the town council is going to be adopting, and that sort of outlines all of our, our, our plans for sidewalks moving forward as well as some, you know, inner, you know, some of our trail connections and bike paths.
Sean?
Thanks, Mayor. Just to follow up on Brian's question, I'll go ahead and let the committee know if they're still, in fact, registered as state vehicles. You know, I I have to use this opportunity to to advocate for the south side of campus, too, and and echo John's sentiments. Having lived on the south side of campus for two and a half years now, I've witnessed firsthand people walking in groups, side by side, in a very narrow shoulder over the shoulder line, and it's quite dangerous. And I understand there was just another pedestrian struck further down, down one ninety-five, closer to Big Y, so where there's also no sidewalks. And so there is a, there is, to Susanna's point, there is a grant program that's about to put out its next round of interest for applications, the Safe Streets for All, I believe it's called, and the university will be looking at that grant. It is a twenty percent match program. But we'll be looking at it for for needs within the campus boundaries. And I'd, I'd be, I'd be supportive in collaborating with the town on anything outside our campus boundaries in order to do the same, though, that I cannot extend any offer to help with a match. But if there's any technical support that we can offer through my office, should the town pursue one of those grants, I'd be happy to do so.
Sean, just to jump in on the Safe Streets for All grant, there's so many different grants out there, and there's more now than there were in the pre-COVID times with all this federal money. So I very likely could have this wrong, so I apologize. But if memory serves correct, I thought it was this program was one that I know we looked at in the last year or so. DPW, our Public Works folks, really interested in pursuing funds, but I thought this was the one where you had to have a, an approved action plan. Or you had to have an action plan in order to qualify for like an implementation grant. Maybe I'm thinking of a different program. But I thought there was something where that was the case, and we were waiting on perhaps CROG, our our regional planning agency, getting sort of a regional action plan adopted that referenced some of the projects we were trying to do to then allow us to be eligible to apply for the implementation grant. So happy to have more conversation with you. Maybe you and I and Jen and John Carrington and Public Works can kind of put our heads together. Because, yeah, there certainly are a number of opportunities out there. We don't want to leave anything on the table.
Could I make a suggestion, could I make a suggestion that as part of your staff-to-staff discussions, you do some mapping and figure out where there are gaps and where there are potentials for grant applications, either jointly or singly? And that that at some point in the next month or two, you report back to us with that?
Sounds like something we could do.
Does that make sense? I mean, because I, first of all, I don't have a good mental map of where all the gaps are. But I think there are, there are so many different programs where there's money coming, both from DOT and Condot and also from ARPA funds and and regular state grant funds. So it'd be useful to know where where we could go together on some of these things. And and frankly, this requires staff-to-staff input, not just this committee's input. So somewhere, say, in April, we could get a report on on where we stand with these things?
We will strive for that.
Jen, is that the map that's a part of that master plan that you referenced for trails, does that, is that, would that serve as a good starting point for the conversation?
So I think that the, so there's a couple of things, the the bike pad plan, I I'm just kind of making a list. What I'm thinking is what we, what we want to do is we want a map of this sort of campus area where we have, and and actually for the whole town, and we do have that as part of the bike pad plan, but existing sidewalks, existing public transit, sidewalks that the town has planned, that, because we have a number of things in the queue that are already funded, and then sidewalks that will be developed as a result of these private, these new private develop developments. Does that make sense to folks? I think that would be.
It does make sense, Jennifer. And I, you know, I think about the the development at the old golf course of forty-four. You know, is there going to be a planned area with a light there with crosswalk? Because that will be an area where students can cross over to Hunting Lodge Road. There's no, no, currently no sidewalk on that end of Hunting Lodge.
Yeah, and that is in their plan, and and these folks are waiting to hear from OSTA, because all of these obviously are on state roads and we need DOT, but you know, coming, encouraging DOT to do all this stuff together, I think is a, is stronger. So.
Right, right.
Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Not to beat a dead horse, but pedestrian safety, pedestrian education, I think, probably could be used. The culture on campus, I've worked on campus for twenty-seven years, walked on campus. You don't drive over twenty miles an hour on campus, and you can react to pedestrians very quickly at that speed, and they don't look in either direction many times, and they walk right out. Unfortunately, they tend to carry that culture out onto the state highways, which have higher speed limits. And then I'm still astounded to see people walking on the shoulder, even though there's a sidewalk on the southern part, one ninety-five south, you know, just off of South Eagleville Road. The black puffer jackets, the list goes on and on. I I don't know how we can get the word out there, educate people to, you know, take responsibility as well as a pedestrian.
Does anybody have an answer for that? Listen, I think that's one of the things we have to talk about at some point. So maybe it can be part of the discussion when we talk about sidewalks in April. Although I'm, you know, I'm sure that these kids have been told this over and over again, but now they're on their own, they can do what they want, they can take risks and.
Yeah, I think that we, we, again, we need to work together on it, because the recent one on the south end of town wasn't somebody that was a UConn student. And, you know, what I would envision in terms of behavior would be not just educate, but also provide people with flashing lights. Maybe if we wanted to do a joint promotional thing that, you know, they can put on the back of their hat or something along those lines that can make them more visibly known. I mean, people don't, people who have a black puffer jacket, and and Brian, I think I know who you're talking about, actually. It's terrifying when they're walking on the side of the road on the south end of one ninety-five with a black puffer coat, but they're not going to go out and buy a brand-new coat when they're just happen to have to walk a distance, but giving them a light that they can affix to their coat or something might be something for us to think about, in addition to the education. And the education doesn't end because, for our community, because as you know, we turn over over a quarter of our population every year. That's going to be an ongoing thing forever. We need to be deliberate about it intentionally in the way that we communicate with our students. But I think the the entire community can benefit here. So.
As far as the puffer jacket goes, I'll carry some reflective tape in my truck, and next time I see a black, I'll I'll step out and slap some reflective tape on the back of their jacket.
Or put dots on their, the heels of their sneakers, because then you can see what the motion is.
The jackets are are a limited concern. My concern is everyone is plugged. All students have, are listening to something, they have something in their ears, and their ability, their sense, their awareness of what's happening around them is diminished because of AirPods and things that are in their ears, because they can't hear everything. And on campus, students expect when they step into a crosswalk, people will stop. That's not the case off campus. So it's it's something that we need to do more educationally.
Ah, okay. All right, so we've got future agenda items planned, both the memorandum of understanding and more on sidewalks and public safety. And on public safety, I hear two educational campaigns, one for students and one for drivers. So if if anybody has any thoughts about how we can do the one for drivers, that might be an interesting input into the, into the public safety discussion.
I think it's, it's all, all pedestrians, right? But more than just, it's all, all pedestrians.
That's right, and all drivers.
Yeah, exactly.
And wherever you are in the town. The, the, the incident in the southern end of town is an is an isolated incident, and it had to do more with Natjark Hospital being there than with anything else. So.
Called a unique set of circumstances, that particular incident.
Yes. Okay, so our next meeting is scheduled, is a regular meeting scheduled for March twelfth. And unless somebody has something to add, oh, transportation services confirmed buses are no longer state vehicles. Are registered in Wyndham, so we don't get to tax them, Mr. Coleman. Wyndham does.
Perhaps, perhaps Mayor Tom can buy you dinner now.
Yeah, right. No, he accuses us of stealing all the wealth from his town, because anybody who can afford whose kids are entering school can, and can, and can afford to move to Mansfield does. So that's including his, almost his entire family.
I mean, if you park the buses in Mansfield, are there any rules and regulations as, as where they should be registered if they're stored here?
Well, we're going to do some research on this. I guess this is sort of an emerging area of inquiry, and I'm I'm a little curious now how we arrived at Wyndham, so.
Well, I I don't think, I mean, just to be clear, they're not, they're not stored in in Mansfield. I don't think that's, I think the town line is on Route Six, is it not? Or on the north side of Route Six?
Is it on the north side of Route?
The WRTD facility, I think you're talking, I think that's in Mansfield.
Is it really? Oh, that's curious then.
So I I can provide a little historical data on this, because I used to be chair of WRTD. And back in the day, back in the day, the buses were stored in Wyndham, and I think that's why, before that new facility was built, they were all stored in Wyndham. So that, I think that's why they're taxed in Wyndham, but maybe we can now bring them.
Oh, Lord.
Yeah, we're.
Paul, thank you.
Yeah, if we're talking about the facility on, on, oops, if we're talking about the facility on South Frontage Road, that would definitely be in Mansfield, so. We will investigate.
We're going to be in trouble with Wyndham again. Okay. Obviously, that will take some following up. With that, I believe a motion to adjourn is in order unless somebody has something pressing to add to the discussion. Anybody have anything pressing to add to the discussion?
Move to adjourn.
Mr. Coleman moves to adjourn. Is there a second? John Armstrong seconds. All those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, and thank you all for coming. This has been a really interesting meeting, and welcome, Nathan, to the committee.
Thanks, everybody.
Take care, everyone. Be well.